Welcome to the May 21, 24 City Council Meeting, 6:30 PM. We'll start with the prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction to lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please salute the flag.
Please lead this to the flag. The United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Getchea.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rock.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Eleven present.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for Louis Judge Demetralakis. He was the beloved husband of Nikki Ionis Demetralakis, with whom he shared 58 years of marriage prior to her passing in 2018. Lou was raised in the Pottegaville neighborhood in Lowell, graduating from Lowell High School in 1951. While in school, he worked part-time at the Demoula Supere, and went on to become a 1957 graduate of the Mass College of Pharmacy. Lou proudly served in the Army National Guard from 1957 to 1962, and eventually opened his own pharmacy, Louis Drug, Inc., in the neighborhood where he was raised, serving his community for 35 years. Never one to sit idly by, Lou went on to graduate from the Mass School of Law in 1991, and become a member of the American Bar Association at the age of 60, and went on to practice law for 29 years. Louis lived his life with dignity and honor, instilling in his family the values of hard work and integrity. He was a remarkable person, and I consider him a friend. Lou took pride in being a 32nd degree Scottish Rights Mason. Throughout his life, Lou served as president, vice president, or board members for countless organizations, including serving as president of the Lowell Boys and Girls Club, St. John's Nursing Home, the Visiting Nurses of Lowell, and vice president of the Friends of St. John's Hospital, member of the Board of Governors of St. Mary's Church, member of the Selective Service of Greater Lowell, lifetime member of the Mins Guild of St. John's Hospital, board of directors of Catholic charity. Lou and his wife Nikki were the 2013 recipient of the Metropolis of Boston Ministry Award. For 27 years, Lou proudly served as a member of the Parish Council, including a term as president for the Holy Trinity Greek Orthodox Church, which is the church his grandfather helped put brick to mortar well over 100 years ago. He will be deeply missed by his family and loved ones, Helene Demetralakis and her fiancee, Chaz Scoggins, Judge Demetralakis and Maureen Bossy, Andrea and her husband Jeff Markcott, Beebe and her husband Robert, Aleah Wiley and her husband Cory, and all his grandchildren. He will be truly missed. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber to all those who passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Any other? Mr. Clerk, please delay. Rest in peace. Two, Mayor's Business, 2.1. Communication for remote Zoom participation, motion to accept or place on file by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Noon. All in favor say aye, opposed, motion passes. 3.1, City Clerk. Minutes for acceptance, Housing Subcommittee, May 14th. City Council Regular Meeting, May 14th, for acceptance, motion to accept or place on file by Counselor Scott, seconded by Counselor Robinson. All in favor say aye, opposed, motion passes. Motion by Counselor Getchea to take 7.5 out of order, a vote for the city manager, seconded by Counselor Noon. All in favor say aye, motion passes. 7.5, vote to authorize the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement for Jean Dark's School. We'll read the full reading, second reading by title. A vote, authorize the city of Lowell, the buyer, through its city manager, to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the Roman Catholic Archbishop of Boston, the seller, to purchase St. Jean Dark's School located at 50 through 68 Draken Street and 223 to 245 University Avenue, Lowell, and to approve said property for use as a school building for the city of Lowell. We do have one person wishes to speak on it. Mr. Manager, the superintendent of Lowell Public Schools, Mr. Liam Skinner. Superintendent Skinner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and Mr. Manager. I was here recently about bad bills, right? This is a good bill. This is a good bill. I'm here to preemptively thank you for what I believe is a decision with great foresight and great benefit for our community. We already have a school we're paying for, rent for, in Chelmsford. That's how badly in need of space we are for Lowell Public Schools and for kids in our community. So this is a no-brainer, I believe, right now. But if you look at this in 10 or 15 years, you look back and say, where else would we find space? If you wanted to build a school today, where would you find space for that? And tens of millions of dollars. So this is a huge opportunity, and I'm thankful that I've been supported in taking the opportunity. So with anticipation of your vote on this item, I also want to add, I'm really grateful to the city manager and his team, and I wanted to take the opportunity to say that as well, on behalf of this purchase of Jean Dark's School for our community, but also because it's evident in every day, we have a wonderful partnership, the city and through the manager, people like Paul St. Seer, Catherine Moses, I talk with Connor Baldwin frequently. There's a great sense of partnership, and I'm thrilled because we're moving things, putting roofs on schools, new boilers for schools, we're talking about cooling systems for schools and so on. And this administration has been a great partner. They're very skillful and strategic in looking for funds, and they're very persistent and hardworking. It's been a pleasure, and I'm grateful for their help. On Jean Dark alone, I don't know procurement law all that well. Appraisals, negotiations, the procedures for all these things, the city manager and his staff have walked me through that process to a point where I think we have a really wonderful decision to make on behalf of our community. Thank you to everyone, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Superintendent. Counselor Dakota, let me get a whole slew of them, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to applaud the city manager and Superintendent Skinner for making this happen. This is a win-win on both sides. Mr. Skinner did not bring up the possibility of this new school, is that it will be a specialized school for special-needs students, that once we put our students in there, we'll also have the opportunity to have the opportunity to bring other students from other communities and charging tuition from those towns. So to me, this is a win-win. I applaud both of you gentlemen for making this deal happen. Thank you.
Counselor Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rock. When we made this motion, it was a dream at that point. We were all looking, saying, what's going to happen to that school? And then Superintendent Skinner reached out and Manager Golden, and somehow we put this together with CFO Baldwin, who pushed and pushed. So we can't thank him enough, and it's about time that we start looking at things like this. When you looked at just modulas right now, if you look at eight classrooms of modulas, it's costing $5.5 million to build, to put on in our property, no parking, no anything. This has 30 classrooms within it, and yes, it's going to take a couple million dollars to put the elevator and a couple other things in it, but it's a bargain and a half, and I couldn't be happier for the school department, for the city manager, his staff, the mayor, who, we talked about this because it is in his Pottegaville district, and we talked about, did we want more housing over there? What were we looking for? And I think the residents won, and so did the students, and I can't thank all of you enough. Thank you.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, as Superintendent Liam Skinner said, this is a no-brainer. When you think about what is before us, it's already there. Yes, it needs work, but something worth investing is this project right here. Let's say that we tore it down, or we applied, we looked for land, for one thing, we'd probably never find it. Applied to the MSBA, we never know when or if we'd get approval. We're talking seven to 10 years down the road, way too long. This is a no-brainer. I say move approval. Thank you.
Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Counselor Dakota stated, this is a great thing for the city of Lowell, for Lowell Public School, because for years now, we've been renting, leasing Chelmsford for special ed. This is our opportunity, not only that we bring those kids from Chelmsford, special ed, to Lowell, but also the surrounding city and town to come, use our facility, pay us. Quarter million dollar a year, we pay to Chelmsford for special ed. The need, not only for special ed, but also the need for more space at our Lowell Public School, this is a great evidence of great partnership, great collaboration between the city and the school. Certainly, it's going to cost in terms of renovated elevators and stuff like that, in the long term, it's a win for both the city and the school. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I, too, would like to congratulate all that made this happen. I think this is one of the few times that I've seen, since I've been on, able to execute a partnership that both sides got the outcome we were looking for. I'd also like to say, in a way, thank you to the committee member at the time, Andy Dakota, because I remember back in 2022, I believe, he put a motion forward requesting the schools work with the city collaboratively, looking for more classroom space, and Mr. Hall and his team, we tried to do something at the St. Louis, and this one came about because of all the efforts of this administration and Superintendent Skinner. Although I'm not 100% comfortable voting, not knowing the cost that we're going to be incurring, but I still think, regardless of that, there's no way that you would get a better bargain than what you guys put together, and I applaud you. Thank you very much.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to applaud everyone that's been involved in this very strategic, forward-thinking decision. I was actually on the school committee when the decision was made to open the rental space in Chelmsford. It wasn't our first choice to be in Chelmsford, but we had parents that were coming to our meetings, and they were saying, we don't want our children, our special education children, on buses heading over to, I think it was Methuen maybe at the time. And we were also forced to try to balance budgets with out-of-district placement numbers that were just completely out of control and on the rise constantly. And I think this is just an incredible move, an incredible decision, and I think it's going to save even more in the long, in the future going forward, because unfortunately, these numbers aren't going down from what I've seen for our population, special education population. So thank you very much.
Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All my colleagues said very eloquently, and I just want to echo the great partnership, and thank you to the manager and his team, and Mr. Skinner, and the school department. This is really, have not seen the collaboration between the city and the school department for a long time, and I hope we continue this partnership between the city and the school department. I know the neighbors are happy that it continues to be the school, not the apartment complex that brings hundreds of people, but again, I just want to say thank you and congratulations. It's a great deal, it's a great forward-thinking of both the city and the school department, and this is what we, as a counselor, want to see, that we take a really forward-looking step, forward in everything that we do to the future. Thank you so much.
We have a motion to adopt by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Getchea. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Getchea.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
It's 11 years.
Before we hit the city council motion, I just want to take a quick second to mention at 5 o'clock this afternoon, the city and Eric Lamash, our Veterans Coordinator, ran an incredible ceremony honoring our hometown heroes. You see the banners that are in front of the counselors and in front of the managers' desk as well. This will be the third year that the city has done this program. These banners will be hung in JFK Plaza within the next couple of days, and they'll be there for the next number of months, honoring those that we have lost in service, and also for those that are still with us in service as well, and we get to both remember and to thank them for their service. So to Manager Golden and your team, and once again, to Eric Lamash, Veterans Coordinator, another job well done, and we thank you for doing this tonight. Thank you. Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may bring to your attention, we have here Mr. Eugene Barrowby, the Purple Heart recipient during the Korean War. He turned 96 young, May 3rd, that he's here. I would like to, all of us, to say thank you. If you could rise, Mr. Barrowby, we call him Gene. So we can... His banner is on the second, if you look at the manager, a very handsome young man, so back then. Thank you again, Mr. Barrowby, for your service to our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yem. Not quite being 7:00 PM yet, we'll hit a couple of city council motions. 5.1, Counselor Noon requests city manager have the transportation engineer look in starting sidewalks along the east side of Western Street from the intersection with Wood Street and at least to the driveway entrance of McGovern Ford at 1212 Western Street. Also have the transportation engineer examine the sidewalk along both sides of Western Street from Wood Street up to the town line with Chelmsford for ADA compliance. Seconded by Counselor Yem, Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So over the years, we've been, this council has been filing motion regarding sidewalk and intersections and whatnot, and the administration has been putting a lot of money into infrastructures as well. So residents, a couple residents alluded, reached out to me and said, can you please put this on and ask the manager and his team to look into it? So that's how the motion came about. Thank you.
Counselor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll do those sidewalks right after we do Campbell Drive. How's that?
Add to the list. All in favor say aye, opposed, motion passes. Motion by Counselor Robinson to take 5.4 out of order, seconded by Counselor Janess. All in favor say aye, motion passes, 5.4. Counselor Robinson requests city manager have the proper department work with members of the community to dedicate and acknowledge Al Mello's veteran Olympic and professional boxing champion's achievements as a Lowellian, seconded by Counselor Scott, Counselor Robinson. Registered speakers first.
First, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to amend that, please, the wording. Request city manager have the proper department work with members of committee to dedicate and acknowledge Al Mello's veteran Olympic and professional boxing champion achievements as a Lowellian, so changing committee for community.
All in favor say aye, opposed, that goes forward. There was a bunch of speakers, but we do have a couple people that want to speak on it, so a motion by Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Scott, to allow a couple of speakers to speak on it. Mr. Rudy.
Keith Rudy, 28 Halle Road. My ex-wife, yes. I'm here to speak on the motion, in favor of the motion to name something after Al Mello. I know a couple weeks ago, I was here speaking about the history of boxing in the city of Lowell, and Al Mello was born in Lowell in 1906. Alphonse Mello Tavares was known as the stocky Portuguese battler. At the age of 18, he fought for the United States Olympic Boxing Team, and in his first fight, he defeated the hometown favorite to win the tournament, George Dussor of France. He laid a loss in the quarterfinals to Hector Mendez of Argentina, who went on to win the silver medal. After the Olympics, Al Mello went pro and earned the impressive record of 42 wins and 10 losses, as well as the New England welterweight champion. After his boxing career was over, fighting in the Boston Garden on May 15, 1931, Al opened the Restaurant Lounge on Gorman Street, known as Al Mello's Restaurant Lounge. I happen to get a lot of this information about Al Mello's restaurant from a young man who worked for him, who's 93 years old, who used to own the Highland Tap. I won't say his name, because I'm sure he'll get mad at me, but we all know who this guy is. He's 93 years old, he worked as a bartender for Al Mello. He also told me how much of a community activist that Al Mello was when he helped the new way of Portuguese immigrants coming into the city in the '30s and '40s, and were settling into the Back Central Street neighborhood, helping to get them to work in the mills, as well as getting them housing in the Back Central Street neighborhood. So I look forward to working with a committee, and maybe talking with the Portuguese neighborhood over there in Back Central Street, and seeing if we can't do something to honor this young man and his achievement that he's achieved for the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Marty Laurie. I live at 93 West Wind Road in Lowell, and I want to thank Keith for bringing this up. You know, I grew up in Back Central, and I went to St. Peter's, and Al Mello's Cafe was next to the Brentwood Lounge. Really, didn't really know much about Al, but in 2009, we were doing the exhibit, I was a volunteer at the Morgan Center with Menon Ali, we were doing the history of boxing, and my first call went to Keith to put the committee together. But during the first meeting, former, the late Jack Tavares, who was a planner with the Department of Planning and Development, came in, and I said, geez, Jack, I didn't know you boxed. He said, I didn't. My father was Al Mello. Well, really didn't mean much to me, I didn't know his father boxed, but some of the people on the committee, Gardner Brooks, the late Joe Downs, they knew him, and what a great fighter he was. And it was at that point, when we were doing the exhibit and getting the things, we found out, I learned, he fought in 1924 Olympics. Not only he fought in the Olympics, but after he turned pro, I think he had one or two opportunities to fight the champion of the world, the guy who had the world title from France, they would not give him a title fight. If he was going to fight, it was going to be non-title. That's how good this guy was. So I want to thank Keith for bringing it forward. Over the years, names, accomplishments here in the city just seem to go away, but I want to thank Keith for bringing this forward, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
I'd like to thank the speakers. As you heard, I think, again, this is another opportunity to tell a story that's been forgotten or unheard by many, and as the maker of the motion, I don't know if there's formal formality, but I would like to appoint Keith Rudy as chair of that committee to work on establishing what needs to be established, because he started the legwork with it, so I think he'll follow through as I know him. Thank you very much.
All in favor say aye, opposed, motion passes. We have one more, I believe, to take out of order. Motion by Counselor Yem to take communication, 6.4, out of order, seconded by Counselor Chow, all in favor say aye, opposed, passes. 6.4, communication, the appointment of William Samaras to the Housing Authority, a motion to adopt by Counselor Scott, seconded by Counselor Yem. Roll call. Oh, Leahy.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm not going to support this. It's nothing personal, I just thought that when we pick people for these boards, I thought it should reflect more on the knowledge and reflect the community that they serve, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Counselor Chow. On that note, I'm going to support this vote. I'm going to ask my colleague to support this vote. I believe, again, I'm going to...
So a motion by Council Robinson, seconded by Council Scott, to allow a couple of speakers to speak on it. Mr. Rudy?
Keith Rudy, 28 Hallie Road. My ex-wife, yes. I'm here to speak on the motion. In favor of the motion to name something thereafter, Al Mello. I know a couple of weeks ago, I was here speaking about the history of boxing in the city of Lowell. And Al Mello was born in Lowell in 1906. Alfondo Mello Tavarez was known as the stocky Portuguese battler. At the age of 18, he fought for the United States Olympic Boxing Team. And in his first fight, he defeated the hometown favorite to win the tournament, George Dussor of France. He laid a loss in the quarterfinals to Hector Mendez of Argentina, who went on to win the silver medal. After the Olympics, Al Mello went pro and earned the impressive record of 42 wins and 10 losses, as well as the New England welterweight champion. After his boxing career was over, fighting in the Boston Garden on May 15th, 1931, Al opened a restaurant lounge on Gorman Street, known as Al Mello's Restaurant Lounge. I happen to get a lot of this information about Al Mello's restaurant from a young man who worked for him, who's 93 years old, who used to own the Highland Tap. I won't say his name because I'm sure he'll get mad at me, but we all know who this guy is. He's 93 years old. He worked as a bartender for Al Mello. He also told me how much of a community activist that Al Mello was when he helped the new wave of Portuguese immigrants coming into the city in the 30s and 40s and was settling into the Back Central Street neighborhood, helping to get them to work in the mills as well as getting them housing in the Back Central Street neighborhood. So I look forward to working with a committee and maybe talking with the Portuguese neighborhood over there in Back Central Street and seeing if we can't do something to honor this young man and his achievement that he's achieved for the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Marty Laurie. I live at 93 West Wind Road in Lowell. And I want to thank Keith for bringing this up. You know, I grew up in Back Central and I went to St. Peter's. And Al Mello's Cafe was next to the Brentwood Lounge. Really, didn't really know much about Al. But in 2009, we were doing the exhibit. I was a volunteer at the Morgan Center with Mehmet Ali. We were doing the history of boxing. And my first call went to Keith to put the committee together. But during the first meeting, former, the late Jack Tavarez, who was a planner with the Department of Planning and Development, came in. And I said, geez, Jack, I didn't know you boxed. He said, I didn't. My father was Al Mello. Really didn't mean much to me. I didn't know his father boxed. But some of the people on the committee, Gardner Brooks, the late Joe Downs, they knew him. And what a great fighter he was. And it was at that point when we were doing the exhibit and getting the things, we found out, I learned, he fought in 1924 Olympics. Not only he fought in the Olympics, but after he turned pro, I think he had one or two opportunities to fight the champion of the world, had the guy who had the world title from France, they would not give him a title fight. If he was going to fight, it was going to be non-title. That's how good this guy was. So I want to thank Keith for bringing it forward over the years, names, accomplishments here in the city just seem to go away. But I want to thank Keith for bringing this forward and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
I'd like to thank the speakers. As you heard, I think again, this is another opportunity to tell a story that's been forgotten or unheard by many. And as the maker of the motion, I don't know if there's formal formality, but I would like to appoint Keith Rudy as chair of that committee to work on establishing what needs to be established because he started the legwork with it. So I think he'll follow through as I know him. Thank you very much.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. We have one more to take out of order. Motion by Council Yem to take communication 6.4 out of order, seconded by Council Chow. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, passes. 6.4 communication, the appointment of William Samaras to the Housing Authority. A motion to adopt by Council Scott, seconded by Council Yem. Roll call.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm not going to support this. It's nothing personal. I just thought that when we pick people for these boards, I thought it should reflect more on the knowledge and reflect the community that they serve. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Chow?
On that note, I'm going to support this vote. I'm going to ask my colleague to support this vote. I believe, Mr., again, I'm going to borrow Council Dakota's statement before I continue. With all due respect, Council Leahy, Mr. Dakota, I respect people's different opinion. I want to follow that tone. You know, Mrs. Samaras, a former mayor, has been a former master, headmaster of the high school, which deals with diversity, students from all corners of the city, from all the world. As you know, the students reflect about so many different languages. You know, the students have parents, of course, of different ethnicity. That just shows the diversity of our residency in the city. And having the experience being that the headmaster of the school, the counselor, the mayor, he's still very involved in the city at different level, I asked my colleague to support this vote. Thank you.
Roll call.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getchea?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
No.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Ten years.
Now being 7:00. Actually, city manager, do you want us to quick word? You're all set.
Can we have Mr. Samaras give us a quick word?
No, I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to the city manager and to the city councilors. And you know, all my life being in the school department, it's always been about working with students and adults. And with your help and working at Lowell Housing, because I know, I'll tell you one thing. I know every member of the city council, I'm very proud about district counseling because you truly represent the city and you're digging in and you're making change. And guess what? At a late age, I still want to be part of that change and I want to help make that change. And I think I have the experience and the heart to do that. So I want to thank all of you. I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Being 7:00 PM, we go to general public hearing. There's one this evening, 4.1, the ordinance to create deputy information officer position and salary MIS. Starting opening in favor, those in favor? In favor, portion of the meeting is closed. All in opposition? Opposition, opposition, that portion of the meeting is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Council Janess, seconded by Council Mercy. Comments? Roll call. I'm sorry, I apologize. Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say I'm happy to see this moving forward. I think this position is needed within the setup of the city here. Most of our other departments, we have deputies in place. We do not in the information systems area. And we all know how important this area of the city is to keeping the business of the city going. We all saw it last year with the cyber attack. So I think this is an important, sorry, cyber incident. I think this is a good step in the right direction to build more resilience in our systems and the people that run them. Thank you.
Council Janess? I'm sorry, Council Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Rock. I won't be supporting this. After looking at the budget, when you look at this department and what we're trying to do in the budget is trying to build it up. And this would be one of the supervisors to it, but it's funded out of the Opera Fund. And when you look at this budget and you look at the amount of money that is funded out of the Opera Fund that isn't touching these jobs at $142,623, it's a lot of money. And it doesn't touch the tax base because it's under Opera and there's eight other positions at least out of Opera. But when you look at this department, it's solely funded, more than half of it, out of Opera Funds. It's not sustainable. It doesn't touch the budget and we're looking at an increase of 2.5% in the budget. But that's just smoke and mirrors when you look at the increase in the trash and the other areas that are increasing. So this isn't put on the tax base yet. And when you see these positions in this department, it's over, it's roughly $1.5 to $2 million with benefits that will occur in future years, once Opera runs out. And it will increase the percentage of our tax base. And we need to look at this further as a body, as a whole, and look at these in depth before we start taking on more. So right now, I'm currently not in favor of this because of the funding source and the future expenses cost from this department that they're throwing. 16 out of 31 positions are Opera funded. And that's not the way that we should be looking at funding costs. One-time cost, I mean, one-time expenses with costs that are just going to keep going on and on and on. So we're paying it out of one-time account for continual costs. So I wouldn't support this. Thank you.
Council Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going on what Council Getchea just said through you to the city manager, how do we plan on funding this after year one, once the Opera Funds are gone? And with that being said, I will be scrutinizing Mr. Fernandez on his organizational chart once we get through the budget because these positions, I just don't know. We're just throwing these in the general fund and your comments?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselors, this is always a difficult balance. But we have the opportunity between today, 2025, as well as into 2026, these positions that you'll be looking at will be funded by Opera, but it also gives us the opportunity to grow them in to the budget. I believe that it's extremely important to have a deputy. And obviously with what we'll be talking about next Tuesday is some of the deputy positions that we have. This is something that is all about continuity. And in the event that our current person that's running it were to leave, I think that is important, extremely vitally important actually, to make sure there's continuity within the MIS department. I also think it's important to have continuity within DPW as we do in other areas. When I first got here two years ago, we didn't have continuity in a lot of places. We didn't have a plan for who was next if someone were to leave. And that's where we're going to continue to build this up. Now, once again, using Opera Funds, Opera, once again, can be used to put jobs like this together and to rebuild back the workforce. And with what had happened with the MIS incident, I think that it showed that we did have a weakness. And I do believe that with all of the Fortune 100, Fortune 500 companies still under attack, that we need to, and we have been, we've been making us, making our MIS department stronger and more nimble. What we do receive is a lot of requests. And I'm confident that throughout this year and the next year, using those Opera Funds, we're going to be able to blend that in. And that's exactly what Opera was used, what was Opera was meant to be in some aspects. And I hope that answers your question, sir. I just wanted to make sure that I do believe we will have that funding mechanism by FY '27.
Thank you.
Council Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Turn on my microphone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The ordinance is a result of two subcommittee meetings. And the meetings came about of the cybersecurity events that happened to the city of Lowell. So, you know, listening to Mr. Fernandez and the city manager's recommendation, this was a first step to providing more security to the entire city of Lowell, throughout the entire various departments. If we don't start with this, we're pretty much at risk of other cybersecurity events that didn't just happen to the city of Lowell, but happened throughout the entire 350-plus communities throughout the Commonwealth. This is an important first step. It's an important investment for us to do to keep the information secure and safe for our residents. I will support this.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. Through you to city manager, Mr. Mayor. I noticed the pay scales on some of these proposed deputies in these positions. Are all of our pretty much second-in-command or deputies or assistants in the same scale range across the board? So we're saying we're adding this deputy position at a pace salary of $124,698 to $1,46508 for continuity. Do we have that same kind of pay with the number twos across the board in all of our departments? Is this a standard pay scale? Or are we picking and choosing which positions get placed into this part of the salary grid?
City manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, no, we don't because we don't have second-in-commands in every aspect. So I guess what you're asking, is there, is every deputy receiving the same amount of money across the organization? The answer to that would be no. It would depend on time, grade, how long they've been here, what step they're on. So that would not be true, sir.
No, no, I don't mean the exact dollar amount, but I'm saying are they still that same pay range on the grid?
To the DHO one level? Yeah, yes, that would be, I believe that would be true. But I would have to make sure I checked on that, on any of the deputy levels to make sure. Because some of the deputy levels or the second-in-commands may not be in DHO one. They might be in DHO two. Or is that? And some would be union employees. So it's kind of a, you know, once again, just coming back to this, when this first happened two years ago, especially with DPW over at the assessors' office, the reason that we didn't have anybody because we didn't have that second-in-command. We didn't, and I mean, we had great people stepping in, don't get me wrong. But the reason to have deputies, in my opinion, on this is living through the history of what we had. And the history would be, say, in DPW, in the assessors' office, over at Wastewater, things that are commanding quite a bit of time and quite a bit of specialty. That doesn't mean, Counselor, that, I don't believe, in the treasurer's office, for instance, there are second-in-commands. Are they in that DHO one, DHO two? That wouldn't be the case because they're union employees that I would think, and I don't want to talk about the treasury. But in other areas, what our goal is, is to get a second-in-command that in the event the person left, the top person left, we're trying to grow people into those positions. Very, very similar to what we did in, not hypothetically, we actually did it in the assessors' office. We had one chief assessor and then three assessors below. We've taken one of those assessors and made them, I believe the correct term is deputy assessor. In the, looking forward, that if, and I hate saying any particular person because I don't want them to go anywhere, but if that person is to leave, we as an organization should be, it should be a seamless transition. If someone's to leave, that second person should move up to that first spot. And then within the organization and within that department, that department shouldn't miss a beat. And since we're talking about MIS, if Mr. Fernandez decided to leave, take another job or do something else, that person, that second position, it would be my intention and my expectation that that person possibly, very highly, would be that person that'd take over the department. And once again, I only say that is because what most of us experienced two-plus years ago, when we had people that had been leaving and we didn't have those, what I would say is deputies, second-in-commands, or whatever the case may be. So to answer that question, to say that they're all on the DHO one level, that would not be the case. However, that's something we could definitely look at for future budgets to see how, to make sure that second person's ready to step up to that level. I hope that answered your question, Counselor.
Yeah, it did. And I mean, that also brings a concern then. Before we're looking to add, shouldn't we be looking for efficiencies in establishing and making sure we have that way in in the wings? And whether or not we can create something new for that person, as long as we have that person that's learning the job, able to step in, God forbid, the number one goes down. I mean, wouldn't it make sense to look across the board and make sure we have that already before we look to add? Because I mean, I see a lot of add-in, but I don't really understand how we're keying in on efficiencies in a lot of areas. It's, it almost seems like throwing more money at some problems and hoping they go away, where I don't see, I mean, I've been, and then the council's been looking for 311 to be implemented for three years now. And here we are with $146,000 recommended additional position. So I think before I can support adding that kind of money, especially where it's one-time funds, as was mentioned, and we're going to inherit it next year, I'd like to see some efficiencies before I can support something like this. Thank you.
Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will support this. I see a need for it. We had a cyber attack not too long ago, partly because we are not prepared for it. Partly we're not strong enough in the MIS department. The MIS department working with not only the, for the city, but also for a branch of fire department, police department, and other departments. So having this person in place is certainly assist or help the directors of this department in making sure that future attack wouldn't happen. Those I'm concerned, the only concern I have is that what happened when Opera Fund ran out? Where are we going to look for revenue or funding to keep this person? That's the only concern I have. But for the time being, for this, from now till 2026, surely I will support it. But what happened from there?
City manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Once again, through you to the council. I'm going to try to answer both questions, Counselors. So I do believe that, once again, Opera is going to be for the next two years. It's going to be for '25 and '26, and carrying into '26 for that purpose. And I do believe the growth of the budget will make, will allow that to happen, where in some of these, I'm hoping most of these positions will be able to organically, we'll find out that we still need these positions, which I believe we do. I do believe we need this simply because of the continuity for our future. And inheriting, not inher, I shouldn't say inheriting, but when I first got here with this council, we didn't have any continuity at all. And we talked about making sure that we had continuity in our future. And that continuity comes to things like MIS, the assessors' office. I hate to even, you know, mention those organizations, but that's really what happened. So with Opera backfilling, doing what, doing one of the many jobs that Opera can do was to support our workforce. That'll happen in '25 and '26. And with that growth, it'd be, it's my intention and the hope that this budget will be strong enough to take that person and make them whole into this budget. But with the reorganization of MIS, when myself, Mr. Fernandez, and a whole host of folks, when we did sit down and have these discussions with what happened to this organization, we need to remember it happened to Fortune 100, Fortune 500 companies. We were not putting money into our system. We were not putting additional resources, which is people power, into our offices. And I think that's what you're seeing with this reorganization of MIS. This is a difficult conversation. Matter of fact, all of this is going to be difficult. However, with the reorganization, with the strength that we have in Opera, with what I believe will be the growth in our overall budget. But the most important piece is to not, to not, not have continuity in specialized areas. And if you look at the departments that we have, the specialized areas in the treasurer's office, the assessors' office, even the clerk's office, the elections office, MIS, you'd have to say, I believe that that's one of the, you know, one of, I can't ever say one of the most, one of the important places that we need this continuity for our future for the city. So we don't revisit what happened two years back.
Thank you.
Council Scott?
Thank you. Thank you for your explanation. I really do applaud that you're trying to put a structure in place that, you know, that works. And I also applaud, I guess, your belief in, you know, how much new revenue and new growth that we're going to have over the next couple of years. I'm not sure that I have the same enthusiasm or belief that that's the case. We've had consistently, I brought this up at the subcommittee meeting about the use of Opera Funds, which is my concern with this. We've had increases of charter schools every year, pensions, health insurance, trash. We're seeing that tonight. In order to finally move forward and fix our roads and sidewalks and schools that we've all been talking about here, we've seen some pretty significant tax increases or fee increases to happen. to happen. So I just don't see the use of ARPA funds for the next two years as a really fiscally, you know, reasonable alternative, and that's just, that's my feelings on this. Thank you.
Counselor Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Sixteen out of 31 positions in this account are funded through ARPA. If this was such a need, we should have never used one-time monies. You should have came back and said, okay, I want a 3.5% increase and put it on the budget. You should have put it on the general fund side. There is no need to put these in this area, except for, we could have put the money to water and sewer, but it's easier to hide it this way, and that's what we did. We could have taken those funds that are funding these positions, shifted them over to water and sewer, and had those rates in an adjustment area, because they're one-time funds being used for one-time monies. I understand that the ARPA is where we want to take the money to fuel these positions, and I'm not disagreeing with the need for these positions. There's many needs. If we go down to DPW, they'll sell us on 15 needs. If we go to the water department, they'll sell us on operators and training. The wastewater can use people. Everybody can use people, and everybody will tell you the reason why. PFAS is right on your doorstep at the water department. We have a consent decree out at the wastewater. I understand what we're saying here, but if the need is here, we should have put them to the general fund and said, hey, here's the need. And I get that, you know, the ARPA fund is the way that we're deciding to fund these. We had three positions in there, I believe, from the 311 that were funded in this budget, current budget, that never spent $1 out of. And we just held the money when it could have been used, invested in something that could have a savings on it, because we could have spent today's money rather than tomorrow's money on it. I'm going to tell you right now, in FY '26, there will be the major cuts or there'll be major increases, one or the other, because all these ARPA positions, I want to say, there's what, 46 of them through you to the manager? Is it 46 ARPA positions being funded?
That's correct, 46 that are funded. Not all of them have been executed, i.e. the 311 that you brought up.
Yeah, but the money's still being held in those positions, so we're talking, you know, 46 positions. If we're talking $100,000, that's $4.6 million with benefits. We're not seeing the side of that end, and, you know, every position can be sold, and I'm totally for this position on the general side, but not out of the ARPA, so I will not support this position.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I respect what my colleagues are saying, but I, Mr. Mayor, I like what you're doing. I think you're really, you've got to make some tough decisions. I have a lot of faith in your, your team, and, you know, I've been here since Connor started, and he's come a long way, and I really have a lot of faith in him and Mr. Ball, and so I understand what you're doing. It's not easy decisions for us or for you to make, but I like where you're going with this. Thank you.
Counselor Mercia and Counselor Janess. Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not a professional in organizing a department. I don't know the first thing about what you need there to make it run better, but I do know that when we had that cyber attack, it scared the bedevil right out of me, I'll tell you right now, to the point where if you feel that you need that extra person and ARPA is intended to support that, then I will support this. I'm not the city manager. I'm not Connor Baldwin. I'm not the person, I want to be the person to save money for the taxpayer like everybody else does, but I, as a city councilor, I have an obligation to help out the department that desperately needs that help, to change things and make sure that these things don't happen again. That's what I'm thinking that I'm doing right now. That's why I have faith in this administration to say that if a department head feels they need that extra person, and the CFO and the manager feel that they can do that with the money of ARPA funding and then continue once it leaves to find it, then I support it. Thank you.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just first like to say I appreciate all the discussions and thoughts of all my colleagues on this. This is an important position. I think we all agree with that. And it's important to note, we're talking about one position right now. I've heard 31 positions, 16 positions, 40-something positions. We're talking about one position. This public hearing is for this specific position, whether we approve the creation of it or we don't. While it makes sense to look at the big picture, I think, I think we're selling ourselves short by borrowing trouble from two years down the road to worry about how we're going to keep the lights on now. I think that ARPA gives us an opportunity to jumpstart things, and yes, this position should have been created years ago and should be on the general fund, and we shouldn't even be talking about it right now, but the fact is, we are. And I'm reliant on the manager and the CFO to recommend to us the best way to go about funding these positions. It's clear that this team believes that the use of the ARPA money is best used to create this position. I'm going to trust them on this. You know, I would like to see it on the general fund too, simply because then we'd know that this position isn't going to go anywhere in two years, but I think it's more, more important to have the position now than to worry about what it's going to do in two years. So I will continue to support this. Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Dakota?
Yes.
Counselor Getchea?
No.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
No.
8-3, pass.
5.2, Counselor Noon requests that the manager have DPW commissioner reschedule the current hours of operation, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. of the recycling center to allow resident use of the facility after their work hours, i.e. same days of operation, with on day being open from noon to 7:00 p.m. Seconded by Counselor Robinson.
Mr. Clerk?
There is a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor. Petita Kim?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the city council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and fellow residents. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before you tonight. My name is Petita Kim, and I'm a proud Lowell resident of 15 years. I'm speaking today in support of motion 5.2, as it is brought by Counselor Noon, which seeks to extend the hours of DPW located at 1365 Middlesex Street. Presently, the city's recycling drop-off container is only available to the public on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It is kept locked. If and when a resident needs to drop off their recyclables, they must call DPW and request that a worker open the door to the container for it to be unlocked. These conditions pose a significant challenge to residents such as myself, who work during the hours that the container is available. An obvious solution to this problem is to extend the hours of operation for the recycling container. If implemented, this change would allow residents such as myself to finally access the container after work hours, and the simple change holds immense value across the city. It increases recycling access, we are reducing waste, promoting environmental justice, and ensuring equitable access for, for what I believe to be an essential service for residents across the city. It would be especially beneficial for residents who have excess recycling, or like the thousands of families across Lowell currently have recently lost curbside recycling service. Lastly, I would like to use this opportunity to raise a concern that I and many others here share regarding recycling contamination within our city. As it stands, the presence of trash in recycling containers is costing the city millions of dollars, millions that we cannot afford. I believe that, or rather, I urge the council to initiate an educational campaign to inform residents of this issue and to provide concrete guidance to everyone that they can follow. It is not too late to disperse recycling do's and don'ts flyers to every household in our city. Thank you again to Counselor Noon for filing this motion. I hope that other members of the city council will be joining in support. Thanks.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to the speakers who spoke eloquently on this matter. I don't mean to direct or to tell the managers and the commissioners to rearrange the time, just maybe an exploration, exploration in a sense. I spoke to the commissioners about maybe reschedule a little bit, maybe one of those three-day to, you know, after work hours, as the speaker spoke of, is, you know, an eight-day unable to do that for the timing. I also understand that the watch person doing that, so, you know, so if possible, yes, do that, one of those three-day, you know, do open it till maybe six or seven. And the speakers spoke of, which I actually planned to, for the next council meeting, about the educational campaign. I know that the previous, you know, person who Gunther, when he was the man of, you know, doing this job, have done was, they went to the school, they went to the school starting this education campaign at the earlier age, and it's an ongoing effort, and we have to do it because of the cost that we, you know, incur for the violations. So, you know, I'll file that the next council meeting. I thank the speakers for, you know, brought it up, which that was an intent as well, because that certainly is going to help us in the long run. More of education, the more education we can instill in the younger age through materials sent home about what not to recycle, what is to recycle is important. So I thank you, Mr. Managers. I hope that we can somehow explore and make it possible, one of those three-day for off-hours to allow residents to drop off that recycle. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, I don't want to, we will get an answer to this motion, Counselor. However, it is my hope, but it's not my hope, we're already working towards it. The budget time may get a little, but this may get pushed a bit, a bit, but we're going to have an informational coming in, I'm hoping, within the next three to four weeks. Once again, this is budget dependent, and it's going to just be discussing exactly what's happening with recycling, exactly, Counselor, what you're discussing, talking about, about an educational opportunity, as well as where we've been going and what we've been doing with what I will say is a relatively new team, a newer team that we now have fully operational, if you will. So this will be, hopefully, reported all at the same time, and what's, what's happening and trying to get those, those dates and times open where people could use it at a different timeframe. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I think a key piece to this was, and I think the speaker is, we have a resident here that's requesting roll out of information. People are willing to do it, and one of the things when I first ran, I found very useful, and I think a lot of residents loved, was, I'm not sure how many remember it, but we had a graphic the city used, see something, say something, and it was pretty easy to identify, you know, a picture of a tree with a broken limb, a park bench broken, overflowing barrels, all basic services that we provide. And on that graphic, I mean, it was, even if English might not be your primary language, it was easy to identify something with contact information. I think if we could take a look at updating that graphic and maybe including part of that rollout with the recycling information and stuff, I tend to find that a lot of residents respond well to imagery that guides them directly with, not a ton of reading, you know, when you have to fumble around through paragraphs to get to where you want to go, you kind of give up, but if you can just look at a graphic and see exactly who you need to contact, I think that goes a long way. Thank you.
Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thanks the speaker who spoke eloquently. Just a couple notes that I want to bring up. Is it possible, because other cities' department opened late on Tuesday, so why can't we have that also open late similarly to all other departments for recycling? That's one. Two, I agree that the campaign about what to recycle and not to recycle, and then on top of that, enforcement, because apartments with renters, they don't really care, they throw everything in the, in the green barrel, so the green barrel become a second or third trash barrel, so, and it costs the city money. Education and enforcement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Chow? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the discussion. I'll try not to duplicate any points. I think this is going in the right direction. I look forward to seeing what this plan looks like from the manager. But I just wanted to mention that something like this would be a huge asset for people like me and my neighbors who live in a large condo building. You know, we, we own our units, we're invested in the city, we don't have access to curbside recycling because we're in a large building. And, you know, some of my retired neighbors do have time during the day to bring their recycling over to DPW, but those of us that work, you know, we struggle to find the time to be able to do that. So a lot of stuff ends up going in the trash instead of being recycled like it should be. So having access to something in the evenings would enable more residents to be able to take advantage of recycling than exist now.
Anything else? No. Just quickly, Mr. Mayor, to kind of expound on Counselor Janess's comments. You know, we pay an exorbitant amount of money, I'm sure we'll see it again next week or two weeks, in our recycling, for contaminated recycling. Is there a map that we have that could, what sections of the city or parts of the city are the worst offenders in this?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. That is actually being worked on, so I would answer in the affirmative, and by the time it does get here to the council, I would expect that we would have all that information at that time. Once again, with the team being as new as it is, I do believe that we've been making strides. The speaker spoke to that earlier. We're making strides as to how we're going to handle that. So that is a map that, I'm going to say, yes, we'll be able to have that at this meeting when we do an informational in regards to recycling.
That may help Counselor Noon's motion for next week, when, you know, to pinpoint those that need the education more often than less. Also fair to say, aye, opposed, motion passes. 5.3, Counselor Noon and Counselor Janess. Requesting the manager contact the LRTA, requesting a report to specifically detail the expected increase for the LRTA of the state funds and intended use of these funds. No second needed. Gentlemen?
There is a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor. Suzanne Curtin?
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Curtin. I live at 24 Merrimack Street. I moved to Lowell a year and a half ago from Juneau, Alaska, and loving the city, and part of what makes it so wonderful, I've only had one car in my life, is this wonderful transportation system, the LRTA, and that's allowed me to explore the city, both on the extensive bus system, and I use Roadrunner as well. So I'm a big fan of LRTA. Their drivers are wonderful. They are kind, they are courteous, and they've got such a tough job. So I would really, I'm speaking for myself, but also for the 350 Climate Justice Group of Lowell, and we were delighted to know that LRTA has received all this additional funding, and of course, we'd like to know where that's going, as you do as well. So, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity, and I really hope you pass this motion. Thank you.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We filed this motion, somebody did file this motion, I think either I or Counselor Janess.
Looks like both of you did.
Yeah, a while back, and LRTA just saying, you know what, I'm not going to respond to you. And are you, Mr. Manager, sit on, as a representative from the city? Has that matter been ever, ever been brought up at a meeting, or is it on the agenda? Or any report on that from the people there, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Counselor, the executive director was out for a tad bit of time. I fully anticipate that we'll get the answer, that we'll get an answer to both of those motions.
Cool, I can't wait for that. Thank you.
Counselor Janess, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, this is a, you know, as Counselor Noon said, this is, this is kind of a remotion. We're looking for this information since the fair share amendment was adopted by the, by the voters of this Commonwealth. The RTA system has seen a significant increase in operational funding that's gone and split up amongst the RTAs. Other RTAs, we've seen things like fare-free transportation, Sunday service, et cetera, et cetera. We haven't seen much change out of, out of the LRTA yet, and I understand that they've been struggling with hiring drivers and everything, but I'd really just like to understand better their plan with this additional funding, what they're going to be able to do with it, and what they're going to be able to do with it and, you know, what our residents of the city of Lowell and surrounding communities are going to see as a result of this increased funding. And so I'm just hoping we can just open the channels of communication and begin a dialogue to be able to, to really, you know, open that up and have some more insight and more communication between this body and the LRTA.
Councillor Dukal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of that money through you to the city manager, I would imagine that the, again, acquisitions of electric buses, is a, an electric grid part of their plan? Do you know that? I would imagine as they go into the future that all of their buses will be retrofitted to all electric.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Council, I've had very superficial discussions with the executive director over the LRTA. I will be getting, and I, and I know this will be coming forth with, it was just a little bit of an issue there. But I'd rather wait to see how many electric buses, how that's going to work. I know you're in the transportation sector, so you probably know this better than-
Not for much longer, thank you.
Better than all of us, but I, this will be something forthwith where we'll get something from the LRTA.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Five point five, Councillor Robinson, requesting manager have the private apartment explore and provide detailed report on creating a portal installation at City Hall Plaza partnering with the sister city, seconded by Councillor Yehm, Councillor Robinson.
Thank you. I mean, again, this, this is an exploratory look at something. Obviously, first and foremost, when it comes back, cost is going to be a big deciding factor on something like this. I know the one that is in place, there was problems in New York, but one of the things, Simmons Foundation was a partner on the one that was installed in New York. And part of it, the reason behind it, they said, it's a network of visual bridges that transcend borders and foster connection among people living thousands of miles apart. I mean, it could be utilized by classes, it could be utilized by you name it. I think with all the events that go on here at City Hall, the flag raisings, it's a prime location to establish something like this with that being the backdrop where we can show our City Hall, the flag raisings, all the different festivities that happen down here. I also think centrally locating it at City Hall Plaza somewhere also kind of keeps a watchful eye over some of the stuff that other communities have seen happen. I mean, human behavior is human behavior and instead of focusing on the negatives, I think there's way too much of an upside not to look at this. Again, I think it's, it's a cost thing. I'm not sure of prices, but I'm hoping that this is something that we can come back with a report and make an informed decision on. Thank you.
Any other comments? All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Five point six, Councillor Robinson, requesting city manager explore working with members of the Western Avenue community to explore the creation of an artistic structure that will assist in increasing visibility towards studios and brewery at the intersection of Western Avenue School Street, seconded by Councillor Yehm, Councillor Robinson.
Thank you. Again, I brought, I brought this up last term. We've seen the contributions of the many artists at Western Ave. Just the POW Missing Soldier table, that was handcrafted, a lot of that work by a craftsman out of Western Ave. There's so many talented people within that community. And if we look at, we've been finding ways to kind of highlight and emphasize the different districts, the different communities within our community. We're doing, I believe, some arches or some kind of expressive work over in Cambodia Town eventually. I think this is another opportunity to develop something using the community that thrives in Western Ave to kind of show people, you know, an entrance to that area. Because so many people I speak in the other community I work for, they don't even know where Western Ave is. And once you give them directions, it is a draw to our city. There's a lot to offer down in that area. So I think if we can utilize some of the talented men and women that, that practice their crafts over there, and if they're interested in getting involved to create some kind of signage or some kind of structure that steers people down to show them what they have to offer, the better off we'll be. Thank you.
All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Five point seven, Councillor Leahy, requesting city manager begin the process to replace the Lowell Police Department Building and the adjacent Lowell Fight Department Building, seconded by Councillor Getche, Councillor Leahy.
Thank you. This motion has probably been put on a few times, but again, just want to bring it up again, put it on the forefront and just ask that we start some sort of process that the council can be involved in. Thank you.
All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Five point eight, Councillor Robinson, requesting city manager explore the creation of a resident yard waste drop off site in our city, seconded by Councillor Noon, Councillor Robinson.
Thank you. This is something they do in other communities. It's, it's an area that's large enough to accommodate whether you turn it into compost or what. And potentially, could it help us on a successor agreement or contract when we're going out looking for services to help us? Would this lighten the load a little bit or, I'm not sure, but I think, again, it could be even a convenience thing. It's, we have opportunity, we hire seasonal employees, so it could be potentially staffed, maybe 12 hours a day during summer months with seasonal employees that just sit there and check in the cars that come in. Whether our residents are free or commercial plates pay a fee, I think there's a million ways, but if we could find a suitable location, maybe even just for composting. The heavy lift, it seems like, is spring and fall, so maybe it's during those two times. But identifying a location that would be suitable to accommodate a resident at least yard waste drop off site is a good start towards lessening what we have to go out and purchase as in the form of a service. Thank you.
Any other comments? All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, you take five nine and five thirteen together, please. Good motion.
Five nine and-
Oh, sorry. Yeah, five nine and five thirteen.
Sure.
By Councillor Scott, take five nine, sure, taking five eight, five nine and five thirteen. Five nine and five thirteen together, by Councillor Robinson, seconded, all the fair say aye. Five nine, requesting city manager update the council and the public on current yard waste collection status. And five thirteen, Councillor Scott, requesting city manager provide a report detailing steps that will be taken to provide yard waste collection on time. No second needed.
Thank you. Obviously, I think the motion speaks for itself. We know that the issues that we've been having, we've all heard from residents, my whole district was skipped again for a couple of weeks and I heard it every single day. So if we could get an update what the plan is, what I'm told is, you know, it's hard to hire for such a short period of time to staff up for it, but my response to that is let's look at what other towns are doing that are picking up on time because, because they are in other towns. So, so if you could get some type of update, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Councillor Robinson.
My colleague expressed it well. Thank you.
All the fair say aye, opposed, passes. Five ten, Councillor Getche, requesting city manager update the city council on the citywide line painting, crosswalk painting and arrow painting, seconded by Councillor Mercia, Councillor Getche.
Mayor Ruck, to the manager, do we already have a schedule for this? For the crosswalk paintings and-
Mr. Manager.
Councillor, I'll, I'll be speaking to the traffic engineer to get this report to find out when, where and how on the long lines. You're talking about the long line as well.
Yeah.
And as well as the downtown getting rebuffed up prior to. So I'll get you the full-
I know the last few years we talked about this, we were going to do it in the spring, so I'm just wondering if that contract was signed and if that was the process was, that's all.
I'll get you, I'll get you the full breakdown.
People are asking about crosswalks around schools, that's all. Thank you.
All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Five eleven, Councillor Getche, requesting city manager have the private apartment enforced no motorized vehicles in cities parks and open space, seconded by Councillor Yehm, Councillor Getche.
Motion speaks for itself.
All comments? All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Five twelve, Councillor Scott, requesting city manager have transportation engineer report on the feasibility of making Hollis Street a no through traffic in both directions between seven AM and nine AM and between two PM and six PM, seconded by Councillor Noon, Councillor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be honest on this motion, that it was really made out of frustration. I think I've heard more from this neighborhood on cut through traffic than any, and we have a lot of streets that are used as fast cut through traffic, but more in this area than anywhere else. They use it as an alternative to 495 and to Route 38. So they're using, you know, trying to get over to Whipple Road to use that as a back route to go through. I've brought up stop signs along Lowell Street, I've brought up speed bumps, which we currently have, but they said Hollis wasn't a candidate because of the pavement condition on it. You know, I really don't know where else to go with it at that point in time. Bill Ricker and Tewksbury actually limit their truck traffic through their streets. They don't allow it. They tell them that they have to use 495, that they can't go through the neighborhood streets. So at a bare minimum, I think we should be looking at that. I look forward to what the traffic engineer has to say, but I'm really open to, like I said, anything that could be done on this. I know Main Street in Woburn, they do it, all the streets there are blocked for these exact hours. They don't want people avoiding Route 95. Wind Street in Burlington does the same thing, trying, you know, to stop people from avoiding 128. So again, I know it can be done and I'm just looking to see what the traffic engineer thinks of it. Thank you.
All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Five fourteen, Councillor Scott, Councillor Yehm, requesting city manager provide a progress report on all neighborhood park projects funded by ARPA. Said report to include projected construction schedule for each neighborhood improvement project. No second needed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you. So yes, I, this really speaks for itself as well. You know, there's eight projects, I believe, that we funded, that we all wanted committed in our districts. And I just want to make sure that we're on schedule for these to happen, that the funding will be allocated. I believe it has to be done by December 31st of this year, that all the contracts have to be signed. So I'm really just looking for reassurance that those eight projects that we all brought up is very important to us, are all on track. Thank you.
Councillor Yehm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you from my colleague who filed this motion jointly with me. I do have concern because residents keep asking regarding the park, particularly in my district, the Clemente Bylin Park and also the North Common. The North Common being used by the Clemente Little Leagues and the city school children. So people want to know. And then the concern is that the funding is allocated and confirmed and reserved for these projects. I know all of the ARPA funding spending committed by the end of 2024 and the project must be done by the end of 2026. So we just want to have a confirmation that yes, the funding is there, the park will be done as promised. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Robinson.
Thank you. I've been asked questions about the project in my district quite a few times as well and through you to the mayor, I'm a manager, I believe. Do we have contracts for some of these multi-phase projects, at least for phase one, are already signed off? Are you aware?
Ms. Bayaz Rose.
We have the projects all under contract for design. Design is underway for all of the projects. They will be wrapped up in the fall, at the, I mean, at the end of this summer to do bidding in the fall so we can be under construction contracts in December for the ARPA deadlines.
Thank you. Isn't that kind of cutting it close though? If, if we only doing design until the fall, and what does that leave us for a window to get into a contract for construction at that point?
Go ahead.
It's, I mean, the plan is to, to use the fall and winter for contracting and then go into construction and the construction season in the spring and summer.
I'm asking, is it separate contract? So we're currently out right now under a design contract, say, say for the Centerville project. Once that design's complete?
We're going to bid for a construction contract.
So now we need to secure a construction company under a new contract, correct?
Yes, we will do in the fall and in the winter.
And, but with the ARPA deadline now, how does that impact? If, if we have the design in place in the fall, we go out to bid on a construction contract, we don't secure that by the time that deadline comes, where are we with the project?
Ms. Bayaz Rose. Yeah, Councillor, sorry, Mr. Baldwin.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think that there is still somewhat nebulous language in the federal legislation about what exactly the obligation will entail. You know, for the city of Lowell and most municipalities, we consider an obligation when a purchase order is issued, which is after a contract is executed and a requisition has been entered by the department. And this is, this is in the weeds a little bit, but addresses your question. You know, with a number of our colleagues and the city manager and I have been meeting with Mr. Flynn regularly about, you know, exactly what will be needed to demonstrate obligation to the US Treasury. And it does appear that they have moved to be more flexible in that definition. However, we have confidence that we'll be able to bid those, put those construction contracts out to bid, receive the bids. It's entirely possible that a, an award on a bid is sufficient to constitute an obligation under the, the legislation, but to get from the award to an actual executed contract, all hands will be on deck to execute all of those contracts. And we've seen, you know, with priority contracts in the city, those move at a pace that I've, I've never seen before. So we feel pretty confident we'll be able to get all of those, especially understanding the priority of this council about these particular projects. I hope that addresses your question, councillor.
Thank you very much, and I'll look forward to the motion response.
Through you, Mayor Ruck, to Assistant City Manager, Bayaz Rose, in your experience, once you have, it goes out to bid and scheduling, what timeframe in the fall is good enough for them to schedule into the spring season for construction? I think that's what the question really was.
Yeah, so typically, so the, the goal is to have these basically done, you know, by the end of August. So first thing, September, we're going out. We have found that if we can get to them in the fall, essentially, that we can get on a good schedule for a spring construction. So that's, that's kind of what our hope is. And, you know, we've had, everybody, as the CFO just said, is very well aware of the, the ARPA deadline, so we're, we're pretty confident that we'll be able to turn these things around. I also do want to mention that we did not sign eight individual design contracts. Some of the design firms like had a, the ability to design more than one park. And so we're, we may bid projects out in groups and not do eight individual, individual projects, just depending on the expertise and, and the kind of construction. Some of the projects are pretty similar. And so the same kind of company would be, you know, might be bidding for both. And so for that sake, we may see some efficiencies in the contracting as well.
When, when you look at Cavello Soccer Field, you went out extremely late and it's almost, it should be completed by August, right? The end of August? Is that what the completion date is? I think you went out in March, right? Or you, you awarded in March?
Correct, yeah. I mean, that's a project that has an incredibly aggressive schedule and it's all hands on deck, so.
Yeah. I'm sure you'll, I'm sure the company that you have will get it done for you. Thank you.
All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Section six, communications from the city manager, six point one, motion response A, Stockloa bathroom project status.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. I want to thank the manager, Assistant City Manager Machado, for getting out there, getting this done. I think if you look at the pictures that are provided, it's an unbelievable job. And I want to thank the DPW for that. And one thing that's in the memo that I'm hoping that will continue and will always continue is it says during the summer break, there will be an evaluation of all petitions across the district. And then they'll put money aside. So if we can continue that type of process, we should never run into this problem again. If we go out evaluate, okay, what's broken and we have parts on. And I thank you, Mr. Manager, your staff, because I think it's forward thinking to try to get these things before they actually hit your desk. And it will save you a lot more time. Thank you.
Councillor Leahy.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. The commissioner and school department with Rick Underwood, they did a good job. The pictures say a lot, so thank you for getting that done. Thank you.
Motion response B, parking placards, excuse me. Councillor Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. Through you to Manager Golden or to Superintendent Hudon, I'm just confused on the number of calls that actually came in and number of tickets versus calls that came in, in the report. That's just my question. And then, yeah, yeah. And then I'm just wondering going forward, Mr. Manager, if we can now, instead of going through the police department, the police department can shift those calls to the parking department and they can actually go out to these residents during their normal business hours. And then after that, obviously, you could shift to the police station.
Superintendent? So I missed the first part of your question. I was making a racket getting over here.
I'm sorry. When you look at the outline, and I thank you for it, I'm just not sure what the difference is between how many calls you actually got and how many tickets were written.
So when a call is received, there's actually two-
So when a call is received, there's actually two, a couple of different call codes. So when a person calls, they may just be articulating a general parking problem, not specifically a placard problem or a residential sticker problem. So that's why there's probably some discrepancy between the placard problem and the number of just motor vehicle problems. There are situations and times where an officer may respond, and it came in as a motor vehicle parking problem, and it may have been a placard problem, and they issued the citation under that. And those citations go to the parking department.
Is there a way going forward that we can distinguish those during the normal business hours of the parking department, and we can send them instead of a police officer? Because that should be their job. We're giving them the funding, we're taking in the funding to go to their resources. So it should be, okay, hold on a minute, we'll transfer you over to the parking department, where the parking department should send out the enforcement piece, not the police, unless there's a major issue with someone arguing with them or something.
I can certainly discuss that with Terry Ryan on the parking department.
Does it make sense? That's, I just, I think that holding up police officers versus parking enforcement are two different, it would be like someone's meter expired, and then having to call a police officer to write a ticket for someone's meter being expired.
I would never say we wouldn't go to a call, certainly with, to help and fix some of those problems when they come up, so. And that may avoid some of the neighborhood problems by having an officer there, too.
I just want to make sure that we do start enforcing this, because we really went up in the rates for this purpose, and I just want to make sure that there's stern enforcement to this, saying, okay, you paid this, here's the ticket, and we move on. And, you know, we can't be looking out for the people who are going to get the ticket, shouldn't park there. You know better if it's not expired. That's all.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. In 2025, we're going to have, well, hopefully, seven budgeted positions, and one of the challenges that we do have is keeping people interested in the job itself. As the superintendent had stated, we'll make sure that Mr. Ryan, the superintendent, sit down and talk about this. Some of the infractions seem to happen in the evening as opposed to during the day. So this is a, this is a change, I think, especially with the seven budgeted positions for this type of enforcement. Mr. Ryan was talking about two schedules, basically, and I'm going to say eight to four, one to nine, but I think it might be two to 10. So this is all, that, all of this will be moving forward July 1st of this year, the FY 2025 budget, if the, if the council wishes to continue to move in that direction for this particular stuff.
I'm always concerned with the police department, because we can't find offices right now. We're down 28, I believe it was, last count.
Twenty-six, and we got 14 that started the academy last Monday.
All right, so is that 26 minus the 14? So you're only, now you're at 12?
No.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's really good. It's good to hear. But I'm just concerned that maybe we're using people that we could be using our other resources, that's all. Thank you.
Motion response C, dog bites. Counsel Robinson. Oh, sorry. Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city clerk. On this report, it says the animal control compliance officer shall be responsible for maintaining accurate and detailed records concerning monthly intake reports furnished to the city clerk's office. Are you getting those on a monthly basis?
I'm not, I don't know exactly how often we're getting them, what we're getting when there are dog bites. I'm not sure the, how much it is, but how regular we get those, dog bite those, but when there's a dog bite, we get the report.
Well, according to this report, you should be getting them monthly.
I'll have to check, Counsel.
So when you check, can you give me a call?
Absolutely.
And secondly, it says mandating reporting of dog information to the city animal advisory committee. Do we have one? Does anybody know if we have one? We should have one, but I don't know that we have one. City animal advisory committee? Evidently not. Nobody seems to know.
Excuse me, as the maker of the motion, Mr. Mayor, can I refer this? I think this needs to go to a subcommittee, because I myself, my colleague beat me to the punch on a lot of this. It looks like, and I appreciate Chief replying with policies that are in place, but we had a resident here last week that spoke about a personal lived experience for her and her family. And I don't think, I think we're lucky if 30% of what should have happened, happened. And so I think this is something, I'm not sure where this should go for more of a dissection. And that's why part of the motion that I put forth was, any recommendations to kind of, moving forward to address these incidents? Because yes, we have policy in place, which is like a block of clay. But I think we need to mold this block of clay and make it something that we're all clear on. I mean, we just saw a question asked, and no one even knows if we have a committee formed that oversees incidents like this. So I'd make a motion to send this to a public safety subcommittee, and I think it's pretty important that we dig in and really get to the root of this and work with LPD, so everybody's on the same page. Because again, we have civilian animal control being overseen by sworn offices that are busy with a million other things that they're employed for. So I think we need to really put our heads together and figure out what's the best way to implement this. And in no way, shape, or form by advocating for anyone to lose a job, but I'm starting to realize why a lot of other communities have kind of outsourced this service or this, because it is kind of a ball of wax that's tough to get your hands around. So again, the motion on the floor is, please refer this to a public safety subcommittee.
Second motion.
Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Mercia. All's in favor say aye. Opposed motion passes. Six point two, information report, FY 2025 budget presentation to the city council. Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. I would like to just transmit to you this evening the FY 2025 budget and capital plan in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 32 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Enclosed with this evening's agenda are several votes, that you'll notice, votes, ordinances, and loan orders, which taken together, should represent, is representing the administration's financial plan for the coming year. This would be referred to a public hearing, which would be June 4th, at the council's request, and a special meeting will be held during the council's summer session to deal exclusively with the budget for the next year. I'd like to say thank you very much to our team, led by Connor Baldwin, Austin Ball. I'd also like to say thank you very much to all the department heads for all the information that they've put forth. They've done, they've put countless hours into this. I also want to say thank you very much for the community input. The community input was, quite frankly, it was something that we need to do more of. It was really interesting, and people had some great ideas and stories and how to, how to work, and hopefully councils were able to watch that, because it was also with LTC. And I also want to take, take your time, excuse me, to thank the council. Many of your councilors took up with Austin Ball to say, you know, what was important to you? What was important to us? You spoke to Mr. Baldwin as well, and myself, and just in a discussion base of where we wanted this budget to go. So what is before us right now? The budget that's presented before you. I know most of you know this, but for the edification of the, of the public, this evening, we're, we're based on a projected increase of 2.5% in the tax base. We've heard the city council, and I believe the council was very clear. I've asked the council over the past two terms to do something extremely difficult. There were things that were left for all of us to deal with, and I believe that this city council has shown that these budgets, this, this type of budgeting is achievable. We also have an increase in water and sewer, and many of you know about the problems and the challenges that we're having with the sewer department in regards to the fine, the, excuse me, the CSO issues that we've had. Trash is one of those lingering pieces currently right now. Back in 2008, we have not raised our trash fee since 2008. This is one of these pieces that I bring to the council once again as a user fee. The user fee that I feel as though needs to be increased, we're looking at non-residential units. Now, that is, I'm looking for, to move forward at $425 for folks who are non-residential. What does that mean? These are people who are investing in the city, in the city of Lowell. I feel as though that they have been, quite frankly, enjoying a steep discount at the backs of the other folks, the other residents. The current residents would be at 325, and our senior citizens would be at $52. This was really achieved, and I really want to highlight one of this, and I hope everyone has had the opportunity to review the new digital book. It's an exciting time. We're still learning a lot about it, excuse me. And I do believe that this is only going to get better when, when we're talking about this new piece. And I want to thank my CFO, as well as the assistant CFO, for all the tutorials that they've given me on this digital budget book. And I think Mr. Ball doesn't like that so much, because it is exciting times. But if there are things that we can help you with over the next week in reviewing this and looking at the budget in its entirety, we have about a phone call away. So once again, we're going to continue in this budget to focus on the quality of life issues that we've all talked about. Once again, in comparison to what we've done on our horizontal construction, I think this council should be commended with the work that is being done with all of our roadway projects. The economic development is still, once again, even as sticky a situation as it is with the environment that is out there right now, I think Ms. Baez Rose and her team are really moving forward with our economic development in our downtown area with the help of ARPA, but also with the increases of monies that are coming in from other developments. The investment in infrastructure, I think, honest and truly has been second to none, but then, and also the commitment to our sustainability, which I know we're going to talk more about. So at this point, I would look to see that on June 4th, we have a special meeting, if that's the will of a council, to have a further discussion on our, on our overall budget, to see how we can talk, make it better, and move our city forward into the future. At that time, I will be moving forward with a brief presentation for all of you. So I would leave that in your hands, councilors. Thank you all very much. Once again, for all of you, for reaching out and having a discussion about what is important to you within our capital pieces as well as our overall budget. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to add that we get a call for a special meeting on June 4th, it's not part of our normal schedule, so as you'll see going forward on the agenda, we have multiple votes and orders planned for a special meeting on June 4th. Counsel Mercia.
5:30, June 4th, 5:30. Is that what we're saying? Because nobody mentioned the time.
Fine by me.
I don't want to be here at 1 o'clock in the afternoon when it's 5:30. What time is it going to be? 5:30?
Well, Counsel, we also, as we, I think we're going to do something at 5:30 with the Salvation Army on that date supposedly. So however you want to do, we want to do it at 6 o'clock on the 4th, is that to the body? Is that okay for everybody? Motion by Counsel Mercia for 6:00 PM, second by Counsel Leahy. All's in favor say aye. Opposed, 6 o'clock on June 4th. A motion to accept and place on file the presentation of the budget by Counsel Yem, second by Counsel Robinson. 6.3, we have a communication. The city manager requests outstate travel, Lowell Police Department, a motion to adopt by Counsel Noon, second by Counsel Getchere. Roll call.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Getchere.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Eleven ayes.
Seven votes from the city manager, 7.1 vote to accept timely submission of the budget. Jeez. First reading, second reading is pursuant to the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 32 of Lowell City Council. The city of Lowell acknowledges a timely receipt from the city manager on May 21st, 2024, of the recommended budget for the city of Lowell for fiscal year 2025. Motion to adopt by Counsel Mercia, second by Counsel Janess. Roll call.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Getchere.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Eleven ayes.
7.2, vote FY 2025 appropriation order, just to be the first reading for the same June 4th date we just discussed. Is there a roll call? Just a motion to refer to the. Motion to refer to the June 4th, 2024 meeting by Counsel Leahy, second by Counsel Mercia. Roll call.
No roll call.
All's in favor say aye. Opposed, passes 7.3. A vote to accept provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 54, property tax exemption. First reading, motion to refer to a public hearing on June 4th, 2024, by Counsel Noon, second by Counsel Scott. All's in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes, vote passes. 7.4, vote to approve the ORR permit for Gallery Z. I'll read the first reading, I'll second reading by title. Vote, authorize the city manager on behalf of the city of Lowell to enter an outdoor restaurant and retail permit with Gallery Z, 167 Mocker Street, to allow for outdoor dining and retail areas. Motion to refer to.
No.
Sorry. Motion to adopt by Counsel Noon, second by Counsel Yem. Roll call.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Getchere.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Eleven ayes.
We have three orders.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion to bundle eight, one, eight, two, and eight, three?
By Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Getchere. All's in favor say aye. Motion passes eight point one, loan order, 2025 capital plan. Eight point two, loan order, rescind wastewater loan order. Eight point three, loan order wastewater EPA compliance capital improvements loan order. I'll give the first reading on all of them, refer to a public hearing on June 4th, 2024, by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Getchere. Counsel Janess.
Mr. Mayor, can I amend the bundling order to include all the nine point one through nine point seven?
By Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Dakota. All's in favor say aye. Opposed. Nine point one, ordinance amend Chapter 20, Article 3, DPW. Nine point two, ordinance amend Chapter 20, Article 7, Department of Management Information Systems. Nine point three, ordinance amend Chapter 20, Article 11, Office of Cultural Affairs and Special Events. Nine point four, amend fee schedule of waste. Nine point five, amend sewer rate, 2025. Nine point six, amend water rate, FY 25. Nine point seven, ordinance create new positions in various departments. All those refer to a public hearing on June 4th, 2024. They're already done by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Getchere. All's in favor say aye. Opposed. Counsel Mercia.
I'd just like to speak about the ordinance, about the fees. The fees, to me, went from 125 to 325. I think that's a rather steep jump, and I would wonder if we could, like, incrementally spread it out somewhat. It's kind of a shock to the residents, to me. I don't know why we can't roll the increase out yearly instead of a solid shocking jump like that. That's my concern. And it isn't just my concern, it's, I know that we need to raise it.
So just tonight, Council, I think we're just here just to kick it to June 4th. And then I think all those options, what you talk about, are worthy to discuss.
Well, then I'm going to say the same thing on June 4th. Thank you.
All in favor say aye. Opposed. All those ordinance, votes pass. Section 10, report, subcommittee, housing subcommittee, May 14th, 2024. Council Yem, report on that tonight?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The subcommittee met on May 14th, starting at 5:30. The members of the subcommittee were myself, Council Chow, and Council Getchea. Also present was Council Mercia, Council Scott joined later. And then from the law department, we have Solicitor Corey Williams, Assistant City Solicitor John McKenna, and Stephanie Hunter, Law Department Attorney French, who is the assistant. The meetings start with the discussion of the, of the information that was provided by Solicitor Williams before the meeting and what the committee asked the Council William to kind of walk us through what the handout that was given to us. Solicitor mentioned that there are 500 and, there are 520 account, 502, sorry, 502 accounts in tax title. Out of that, the Solicitor mentioned that about 128 account were owed less than $1,000. So and in the effort to collect it, the Solicitor mentioned that they have sent letters to all the account holders of the delinquents. And so far, they have been very successful. So the committee spent about $50,000 to spend reaching out to the account holders of the delinquents account and then generating about $500,000 back in settlement from those owners. Mr. Williams, Solicitor Williams also talked about, you know, to help out some of the resident who are delinquent due and then causing of the increase in interest, which is 16% per state law, allowed the city to charge for outstanding account on the tax title. And then Solicitor William mentioned that the city is willing to forgive about 50% of that so that the account holder has an opportunity to pay off or making arrangement with the city of Lowell by putting down 25% of what remaining on the balance and then do a monthly payment to the city this way. Also, there was discussion about the tax taking in recent Supreme Court cases and also cases in Massachusetts as well of how that some of the cities in town previously, including Lowell, would sell the tax lien account to a company. A company then moved to foreclose the property and then satisfy the tax and keep the remaining balance. So now it's the law, the Supreme Court rule that would be, it's called equity theft. So this is what the city would try to avoid by working directly with the, with the account holders and making some changes, forgiveness of the interest that was paid up to 50% and maybe, and also working with the payment plan by having the account holder put 25% down. So those are the, so those discussions. And moving forward, the city will try to work with, with the account holders. And the question is, would be to avoid any lawsuit similar to what Supreme Court and the two cases in Massachusetts by having the tax holder, if the city ever to foreclose on it and then sell the properties, would then refund the money after satisfying the outstanding tax. So that's what the law department is looking at and working to say, to take care of the outstanding taxes, also to help the homeowner as well. So that's the report, and I would welcome my colleagues, Council Chow and Council Getchea, to add anything if I'm missing something. Thank you.
Thank you. Need to have the city clerk take short notes to the subcommittee meetings. Council Robinson, you want to go tonight or you want to wait a couple of weeks?
I'll wait because it's a work in progress currently. Thank you.
So motion to accept the report of the housing subcommittee is report of progress by Council Yem, second by Council Robinson. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. We'll hold off on the ad hoc from tonight. Section 11, executive session, 11.1. Executive session to consider and discuss potential negotiations relative to LePoli Companies LLC. Public discussion which have a detrimental effect on the city's position. Yeah, motion to enter the session and to also to adjourn from that session by Council Janess, second by Council Robinson. Roll call? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getchea?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia? Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Eleven ayes.
Council Getchea, announcement?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I just wanted to thank the DPW. It is DPW week, started May 19th to the 25th. And I wanted to thank them and the manager if you could send our thank yous to all the DPW staff for all their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, I want to thank everybody on the manager's team for, this was not in the, on the agenda that said motions answered, but my motion was answered because I found out about the cleanup that took place on First Street. And Assistant City Manager Sean Machado provided food for the people. And I want to say a thank you to the, to the technical sergeant Smith from the ROTC, the direct, who's the director, and his students, the ROTC people that are involved with that, the students. They went along there and they got, are you ready for this? There were sofas, appliances, furniture, large items, right along. It was really unbelievable. So I didn't really realize this happened until the director, Smith, told me about this. Thank you so much. I'm sure the neighbors were thrilled, especially this woman that does so much work out there. Thank you. Midge Landry. Yes, thank you.
Council Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thanks the manager, the Department of Veterans Affairs, for an mayor's office and my colleagues for a great event to honor our veterans today. And this is really three years, but it keeps growing. And my hope is that one day we would have the parade, you know, to honor our veterans. I know, it's my dream. So I have a dream. So thank you so much again. It's a great, a great event. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to CNAG, thank you to CASE, thank you to the city administration, thank you to Melissa Speed and her team. The mural that's in progress over there at the Aiken Street VFW intersection. I stopped by yesterday while the artists were out there painting. And within 10 minutes, I probably saw 15 to 20 vehicles going by, beeping, thumbs up, waving. It's really something special in progress over there. So if you haven't had a chance to check it out, I'd recommend take a stop by. Thank you.
Let's do it.